All my sense I said on bold. Eight and a half by eleven.
Yes, it was. Everyone is enjoying the whole team machine. Get the top one.
All right, we'd like to welcome you all here tonight and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is June twenty, June sixth of two thousand and twenty-three. And we are beginning at six thirty P M in the city council chambers of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. We have Councilman Christensen online. We have Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Hune, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Whitestone, and Councilman Fitziamanu. And myself, we are also joined at the dais with our city manager, Mr. Pyle, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We will now turn the time to Councilman Hune for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. I just want to invite all of you to stand up with me and to do the blessing of religion. Thank you.
And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, our history, and for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We'll now go to our minutes of May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. I will turn it to the council for a discussion or a motion on the minutes.
Move to approve those minutes, Mayor. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in flavor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, those pass. We will now go to our comment period. We will accept comment period. We will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to five minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor. You will approach the mic. If you did not sign in, please give us your name and address. All comments should be directed to the mayor. No person addressing city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once during the comment period. Speakers should not expect any debate or dialogue with the mayor, council, or staff. We will all have our opportunity to respond at the end of the thirty minutes. And speakers shall refrain from personal attacks against fellow citizens, city staff, or members of the council. So we will turn the time over for Speaker One. Ms. Mills, yep. You print it. I can read your handwriting.
Thank you, Mayor Lane. That was really quick. And I'll be brief as well. My purpose in being here tonight was that I heard about the the discussion to change the format for those who would like to address you and the city council. I understand that there is a need to keep the time brief. But I don't like the idea of limiting it to once a month. People's lives are busy and you just restrict them so greatly on being able to be a part of this process. If you don't open up your meetings and allow more opportunity for the residents to be heard. So I'd really encourage you to keep your meetings open for public comment and not have such a great restriction on the number of meetings when an individual can comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Two.
Well, gosh, Mike Markham. I was going to speak on the lingerie stuff. But I went out and did my homework today, checked all the stores that were in question. Didn't really see a problem. Seen some avenues where, gosh, I wish my wife was still alive. But now I want to comment on your plan to limit public input into the meetings. If you go forward with this plan, it's an excellent way to cut the public out from public comment. To me, it's just saying, we don't want to hear from you. We don't care what you think. We could send all the texts in the world. Doesn't mean they're going anyplace. So I think if you go through with the plan that you're putting forth. It's just. We don't care what the public thinks. We're going to do what we want, when we want, and how we want. The only time we want to hear from you is when we want your vote, and we're going to throw something really great in your face, and so we need your vote. So to me, to, to. You know, because as you know, I probably wore out my welcome more than once after over fifteen years. But, you know, I don't know how you'll control public comment on. Like you were saying, on taxes, if people want to voice their opinion on, 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 on property tax. You know, or are you just going to say you got thirty seconds to say yea or nay? Can't get your name out in thirty seconds. You know, three minutes. I guess if you think that's all you want to hear from the public, I've liked the five minutes. And sometimes I've asked for more. But, you know, to take it to once a month. And, and like she said, people's schedule are busy if you miss it. There's going to have to be some way you're going to, okay, this is a public comment. Tuesday. Any other days, we don't want to hear from you. You know, I'm sorry, that's, that's not the way government should work. I think you should be open to listen to us. You know, not all of, not everybody's out there is, is set to hurt the city. Run the city down, but I think this has given us a black eye. And it won't be something that I talk about favorably as I get out and about, and not that what I think or what I say means diddly to anybody in this room. But I've defended this city. I've lived in my house forty-plus years. I've, I've grown out on the, grown up on the west side. Even when I was living on the east side, I spent all my time out here, and I've defended this area. But, you know, if that's something that y'all vote for, you want to cut us back to once a month, three minutes, I think it's a big mistake. But it will cause nothing bad, hard feelings from people like me to people like y'all. Because you're basically saying we don't care what you say. And it's sad that you're making this decision based on one person that came in and threw a fit for approximately three weeks. And that could have been cut off really quickly. Because the public comment, or not public comments, the anyway, you know what I mean, needs to be limited to that subject. It can't go off on different tangents and go on forever. Should have been cut off. No, this is what we're, we're talking about. You need to stay on subject. If you don't want to do that, then we'll ask you to leave. We're now doubled down on police officers. You know, because of that person. You know, don't, don't judge us all by that person. You know, I don't remember myself ever getting up here and screaming and yelling and throwing a fit. I don't remember Jim doing it. There's, you know, we've had it from a couple of people, Finbo, he threw a fit one time. You probably don't remember him, Mayor. He's dead now. But he used to come up for, you know, for a long time, people knew him, so please don't punish us all. Because of, you know, we've also, we've got, you know, I've heard you also, we got, we've got to get the public more involved. Well, once a month for three minutes, that's not going to cut it, I'm sorry. Feel good about what you do.
Thank you. Speaker Three.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Jim Vesok. I am also going to talk about this restricting a person to speak once a month. I agree with the, the two before me. You're basically telling the public, we don't want to hear from you. Now, the changing the time from three to five, or from five to three, I have no issue with that because almost every other jurisdiction does three minutes already. And so. And then on the public hearings, that's where it got out of control. And on the public hearings, write the ordinance where you must stay on topic. That's where you fix it, and you limit that to a three-minute or a five-minute if you don't change the time. Fix it in the public hearing, don't put the shame on us because, once again, because of one person for three weeks. And just like I said, I think he may have flamed out. You know, and, and change everything for all the citizens and I know when we miss a meeting, something, my notes will get kind of long on what I want to speak about. And, I mean, for example. Well, it's just about six months ago, H B four eleven was the big thing. There was no council meeting set. And because people showed up, you had a special public comment section. Where people could speak. No council meeting, it was just the public comment thing. So you put out that you want to hear from us, you guys say you want to hear from us, but then you're considering something like this. Fix it where it's broken in the public hearing part for that part, but not the, the comments and in this part of the meeting. And then the other thing, today I went around and did my three areas for clean and beautiful and driving around area one, two, three, Chesterfield Parkway, that area of the city, most of District One. And I, I'm not, I'm shocked, but I'm not shocked at the violations that are out there. And then once, I mean, what is our code enforcement doing? What is our parking doing in some of these areas? With parking, I know they're kind of overwhelmed with people calling in with stuff. But are our code enforcement guys out there yet? And it just. I'm rough in my neighborhood. I try and keep my neighborhood nice and clean, but man, some of these other neighborhoods in the city are pretty bad. How many of you took my challenge? I know one did because they said something. Go out and look in your neighborhood, report them, follow up and see what's going on. And, you know, you guys are working on the code enforcement, but I don't even think you put a Band-Aid on the, the problem yet. And so I, hopefully you guys will keep looking into that, keep refining it, and start holding the employees accountable from the top to the bottom.
Thank you. Speaker Four.
No, I'm new to these council meetings and I happen to listen to the study session today, and I wanted to address to you about the public, the public comment time as well. My thoughts echo the, the previous three. But I also wanted to let you know that I was really just appalled that even though he, the guy that was presenting to you that he, that it was absolutely legal to do what, to do this. But I wanted to bring the Constitution into it, that we have our First Amendment. And in that First Amendment, we have five rights in there, and we have the opportunity to redress our grievances to you. And when you shut out the public, we don't have a voice and offer one individual. I witnessed two weeks of that, and I think that there's just, there's problems in the, in the government, the way that it's set up, or that there's just needs to be some changes to that this need to be fixed and yeah, and I think that's about all I wanted to say, that it just also, well. With the, the timeframe, I'm okay with it going to three, like five, but if it was a, a really special and a lot of jam-packed, then yes, I, you know, go down to a, a shorter time. But, yeah, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else that wished to speak that did not have a chance to sign in? So name an address, please.
Yes, I'm Richard Noack. I live at twelve thirty-two S Parkway. So I've been having some trouble with my internet service today, connecting my printer. I was going to print off some reports. I thought you might be interested in the twenty years I've been in this neighborhood to benefit that I've been to the county. And we actually applied for an allocation from Natural Resources and actually was awarded in two thousand and seventeen. I was just pulling up some of these for a court case as some evidence, and I found a lot of these numbers really interesting of how our organization actually helps West Valley. So, of course, I've been here before because you know, like I have evidence that I've been lied to from Animal Control. They write things in the reports that aren't true. And it was interesting because the first time they ever came to my property was right after I received this allocation from Natural Resources, and I found that timing was interesting. But hopefully in the next meeting, I can make some copies and I can, you know, you know, I want not only benefit the city, but this county in its whole, and I have numbers to support that. Which I received actually right from County Animal Control about the cost of things that when they take these things in, if we take them into our operation, we save them that money and then other things we intercept before somebody calls Animal Control, so help, so I'm planning to move because I feel I'm being harassed and we have you know, actually reached capacity with some of the zoning issues, so we're planning on moving to a, a larger spot so we can have larger capacity. We would like to keep an operation in West Valley, so I'm going to provide those numbers here. Probably next week, I will get this printed. I was actually going to read it off my phone, but I left it on the charger rushing down here. So, anyway, I appreciate your time. I will be back with you next week.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak? And there's nobody over there this week? Okay. Thank you. So we'll close the public comment period and turn it to the city manager. Did you have anything, Mr. Pyle?
Not tonight, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it to the council. Were there any comments for tonight?
I have one, Mayor. Thank you. I, I spoke this one in the study meeting before. And I'm going to say again, but I'm thinking about, I probably going to be a minority in this matter. I read all of you just about the public comments. I, I personally don't like it, and I can afford no, I will tell you that we will know for next week. The reason is because we take away from people opportunity and take away from their freedom to express their concern here at the city. And we, at the city, the council member, we serve the people here in the city. We allow them to spread their concern and allow them to say something they feel like is not the right thing with the people here in the city or whatever, who here to do something that's not correct or not right. Another thing is, we made a mistake here. Is, is, is the wrong, is, is, why is wrong? The guy, he came here. He spoke last time. He took advantage of certain item in public hearing to attack. Personally attacked someone and multiple people here, council members, the mayor here in the meeting. He I, I couldn't, I couldn't sit there and listen to that, to be honest with you. I was, I was so upset about it. You could not take advantage of something and then attack personally to someone else. You have to stick with, with the, your topic. That certain in public hearing, it's not in public comment. So two different things here. Public hearing is not in a public comment. It's public comment for everybody. And we need to keep that for open that to public, to people to come here and express their concern. And I can afford no, I, I told that in a council meeting, and I can do that because we basically, we seem like we taking so much power from the citizen here, take away from them. They're right. And I think there's nothing right for us to do that. And I can say, I said, I can, I said that in a, I mean, in a study meeting. But I will, I will vote no for that one for next time.
Yes, Mr. Reston.
I would just want to express a similar sentiment. I think the, the comments that we've had the last three weeks were so appalling that they perhaps were being a, a little too aggressive on restricting that and, and I think hearing comments today and maybe taking a time to reflect, we can implement other controls, but I I think the, I, I maybe we'll reconsider the once a month restriction and share a sentiment similar to Councilman Hune.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else?
I'll, I'll third that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to our public hearings. We will, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle for G P Z two, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, ma'am. We have an applicant for a zone change along with a couple of other actions. Mr. Nick Mingo at fifty-nine ninety-eight West Parkway Boulevard is a project of thirty-seven plus acres and is requesting a or requesting consideration to change the general plan from large lot residential and medium density to light manufacturing and a zone change from A one and A to M. This would be an industrial project that would contemplate over five hundred thousand square feet of buildings of various sizes in the areas considered. And the action would, I know I mentioned this, but just to reiterate, there would be three actions attached to the to the item here. First is the amendment of the general plan. Second is the amendment of the zoning map, and third is entering into a development agreement after the public hearing, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Pyle before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. And we will, I'll turn it to the council for ordinance twenty-three dash seventeen, which is the general plan change.
Just reading through the planning commission minutes, there were a few that voiced the dividing line between manufacturing and residential would be the Ritter Canal. And I, I really think, and even studying me last week, that the dividing line should be the road. Is it Beagle Way, Beagle Way? So I think north of Beagle, I'm totally in agreement with manufacturing or but I think residential would be better fit since we have residential already planned to the south, and then we have the school to the south, so I'm not in favor of this zone change. So if no one has a a motion, I'll, I'll just motion to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fitzamano.
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen.
No.
Councilman Norfelt.
No.
Mayor Ling.
No.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
Okay, thank you.
May a vote go to?
Sorry, you're still on Speaker Don. Okay. All right. Well, now to consider ordinance twenty-three dash one eight.
Seems like since we've denied the the general plan, it makes sense to deny the other items as well, so I'll move for denial of ordinance twenty-three dash one eight.
Second.
Hey, thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzamano.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
No.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
Thank you. We'll now move to resolution twenty-three dash seventy-one.
Motion to deny a resolution twenty-three to seventy-one. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fitzamano.
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
No.
Motion for denial passes by majority.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to our resolutions, resolution twenty-three dash seventy-five, Mr. Pyle.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. This resolution would approve an interlocal cooperative agreement to combine resources and form a combined SWAT team between West Valley City and Taylorsville City.
Hey, thank you. We'll now turn resolution twenty-three dash seventy-five to the council for discussion or a motion.
I would motion to approve resolution twenty-three seventy-five.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Fitzamano.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to resolution twenty-three dash seventy-six, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would award a contract for playground equipment replacement over at Country Meadows Park using C D B G funds and the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for resolution twenty-three dash seventy-six for discussion or a motion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash seventy-six. Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fitzamano.
Aye.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Christiansen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt.
Yes.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now turn to resolution twenty-three dash seventy-seven, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would authorize an amendment to our residential solid waste collection and recycling service with ACE recycling and disposal and would allow for an eighty thousand dollar increase in that contract.
Okay, thank you. I will now turn this resolution twenty-three seventy-seven to the council for discussion. I will now turn this resolution twenty-three seventy-seven to the council for discussion or a motion.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash seventy-seven.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fatismanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to resolution twenty-three dash seventy-eight, Mr. Pyle.
Thanks, ma'am. This resolution authorizes the city to award our annual construction, construction contract for the twenty-twenty-three micro surface resurfacing project out in the streets and the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars coming from class C roads.
Okay, thank you. We'll now turn resolution twenty-three dash seventy-eight to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash seventy-eight.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Fatismanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now go to our unfinished business. We have I don't know if it's a resolution or just a comment, but twenty-three dash sixty-seven.
Thank you, ma'am. It, it is a resolution and it's a good point, though. This, this doesn't actually take any action. It just expresses council support or not, depending on how the vote goes for a overall capital project priority list in the next current well, actually, I was thinking it will be in the next year most likely, but it would authorize it in the current year. Comes out of CIP funds. Encompasses a number of different projects across the spectrum of the departments in the city and would be in the amount of five point eight million dollars. Well, actually, almost five point nine.
Thank you. So we have twenty-three dash sixty-seven. I will turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Just a, a point of clarification, besides just being a prioritization or an intent to support a list, each of those things on the list will be brought to council for approval or for the discussion.
Yes, a good point of clarification, both, well, whatever the particular process demands in that for that particular project. Also, I should note it also allows for, of course, change of prioritization if something else happens.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
With that, then I would move to did we say this was a resolution? Sorry.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Okay, move to approve resolution twenty-three dash six seven.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Fatismanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. We will now go to resolution twenty-three dash seventy-two. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution grants consent to include West Valley City in the Salt Lake County Convention and Tourism assess, assessment area known as the CTAA organization.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion on this item.
I intend to vote again in support of this because all of the hotels that will be assessed this fee that have responded have, have requested that we approve this. Our, our own staff from the Parks Department and from the Maverick Center have asked us to approve this. And I think that it would benefit our city. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash seventy-two.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion a second. Was there further discussion?
I, can I say something, ma'am?
Sure.
I, I think we have been doing business here for years and Maverick Center is a I don't think it's a why we, 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 we make a change now because they have done so well over the years and is, we don't have this one before. We still do running business here. And I, I don't know, we raise taxes and let that, you know, someone else to take care of this and to run this. I think it's a a bit concerned to me that that's what I'm, I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else?
Um, just clarification from Councilman Nordfeld's comments. You, you said that the hotels would pay this fee, but it's actually the the user of the hotel service that would pay it.
That's true.
And it's a tax on them and the hotel is just a pass through of that tax to, to this fund. So that's all, just clarification and I'm still opposed, so.
Okay, any further comments? All right, Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Fatismanu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
No.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
No.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to our consent agenda. We have item twenty-three dash seventy-nine, Mr. Pyle.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. This is a one-item consent agenda consisting of a warranty deed from Delgado and Sons Trucking for the project over on two oh one South Frontage Road for the road expansion.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Let's approve that item on the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion and a second. Ms. Kamic?
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fatismanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have a need for a closed session. We do have three other meetings after this one, so we will adjourn this meeting and then move into our other committee meetings. So we have one more action item.
Motion, motion adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We stand adjourned.
Called to order the redevelopment agency meeting tonight June sixth, twenty twenty-three. Right now it's at seven oh five PM. And the open ceremony is, we done it earlier. And roll call, we have everyone is here. Eric Councilmember and the mayor is here. Don Christensen, this is on Zoom right now. And we have item number four here, approval of minutes and we need the motion in a second for this one, May fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Move for approval of those minutes?
Second.
So we have a motion, have a second. So all those in the favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you, Don. Okay, motion passing unanimously. Report, go back to city manager. Is any?
Thank you, sir. No.
No, okay. Public hearings, we have here this the item right here, it's a resolution twenty-three zero three. And we're gonna pass over to a city manager to this one.
Yes, thank you, sir. So this is the budget, final budget or adoption for the redevelopment agency for the upcoming fiscal year. Is not changed and is the same figures as the budget that was tentatively adopted in May.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna open this one to public hearings. So anyone wants to say something about this, the budget twenty-three twenty-four, just to come to the microphone and speak to us. None? So I'm gonna turn it over to the city council for motion or action.
I'll move to adopt resolution twenty-three dash oh five. Sorry, what's the my screen just went blank.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three, zero three.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion and have a second here. Gonna pass over to a recorder, Nico Kama.
Mr. Fatismanu?
Aye.
Mr. Whitstone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Hune?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Well, thank you. So all favorites in this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we adjourn.
I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Housing Authority and note that we've had an opening ceremony as well as a roll call already completed. Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes of May second, twenty twenty-three, and I'll open to the committee for any discussion or motion. I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
And all who are in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you. We'll approve and accept those minutes. Do we have a report from Mr. Pyle?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we'd like to ask you to introduce our resolution twenty-three dash oh three prior to opening for public input.
Thank you, sir. Yes, so the housing authority budget in the same status as the redevelopment agency budget that was just passed momentarily ago or some moments ago was adopted tentatively in the beginning of May. It has an amount of roughly five and a half million dollars and has not changed since it was tentatively adopted last month.
Thank you. The public now has the opportunity to provide any input regarding this budget resolution. We'll entertain any comments from the audience. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public input regarding this and we'll return it to the agency for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash zero three.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Kama?
Mr. Whitstone?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Fatismanu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. We'll entertain one last motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.
All right, I'll call to order the West Valley City Building Authority. It's seven oh nine. Our opening ceremony has been taken care of. All members of the building authority are present. And I will ask for a comment or approval of the minutes for May second, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve the minutes of May second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor of approving your minutes, please say aye.
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 Thank you. And do we have a, any comments or input from our city manager?
No, ma'am. Or sorry, no, sir. Thank you.
With that being said, would you please introduce our public hearing for input regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget?
Yes, thank you. So same as the other two entities beforehand, the building authority budget was tentatively approved last month. It's in the amount of roughly seven and a half million dollars and has not changed since it was tentatively adopted.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to open, open the public hearing? Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the building authority budget? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment period and put it to the council, to the building authority.
I move for approval of resolution twenty-three dash zero three.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Kamic?
Uh, Mr. Nordfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Fatismanu?
Aye.
And Chairman Whitstone?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I was trying to see if there was another agenda because I have a, there's on the back here, but all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.